Okay, I'd like to call the January eighth, two thousand and twenty-five Board of Selectmen's meeting to order at six thirty. Mr. Pinio, do we have need for a non-public session?
Madam Chairperson, we do under RSA ninety-one A three, Roman numeral two, lowercase b hiring and lowercase c reputation.
Okay. First on the agenda are the minutes. First set of minutes, December eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four. Reading these minutes, it showed how often we met to talk about Warren articles. Does anybody have any corrections or changes to the December eleventh minutes? Hearing none?
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion by Paul, second by Brian. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next set of minutes, December sixteenth. Does anybody have any corrections, changes?
Yeah, on page six, down near the bottom where it says number six, revisit all the works vehicles. Mr. Harriman, three hundred and eighty thousand CRF was a three to two BOS vote, and it says concerned may not be viewed by the public. I want to add the word favorably after viewed, may not be viewed favorably by the public.
Okay. Do I have any others corrections? Okay, I have a motion by Paul.
Second.
Brian, second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next set of minutes, December eighteenth. And I have, let's see. Yeah, I do have one on sixteen. No, I don't. I can't figure out what it was. Okay, Paul.
Thank you. Page thirteen.
Okay.
Page thirteen, attribution to me, says, is the opinion in adding three fifty, and I'd like to just insert the word, two brace, as opposed to brace.
Okay. Any other corrections?
Make a motion. We approve as amended?
No, I got one more. I'm sorry.
Okay, Paul. What, next page, please.
Page fifteen, just clarification, please. So we have a motion up top that says move to approve this proposed warrant to public hearing, second approved five zero. Nevermind, I'm going to withdraw that. It was a prior motion. Nevermind. Brain cramp.
Well, the same I had earlier. Okay, I'll second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
December thirtieth. Can I have a motion?
Move to approve as presented.
I got a motion by Brad.
Second.
Second by Paul. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm a no.
You're a no? You don't want to approve them?
No.
All right, so it's a four to one approval.
Three to one.
Three to one.
Ah, you're right. We're down one. So we're three to one on the floor. Okay. I'll start off with the public hearings. Okay, I'll open up the first public hearing. The Wolfboro Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, January twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-five, at six thirty PM to consider a temporary event permit application for the Clark, the Kate Park Band sponsored by the Wolfboro Parking Recreation to hold concerts in Kate Park and Community Bandstand on Wednesday evenings from June twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five, through August twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five, plus the Fourth of July and its rain date of July fifth, two thousand and twenty-five, from six PM to nine thirty PM. Permit two oh two five dash one. Do I have anybody here who'd like to speak to this permit? Is there anybody in the audience who would like to give us any comment on this temporary event permit application? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing. Board of Selectmen, do you have any issue with this? This is a pretty standard request from the Wolfboro Community Bandstand. They've played for years, since nineteen ninety-two. Are we comfortable moving this forward and granting the permit?
Yeah, I'm comfortable moving it forward. It's an annual permit they come in every year for, so I'll make a motion to issue the, are we here, a temporary event permit for the Kate Park Band sponsored by Wolfboro Parks and Rec to host concerts in Kate Park and Community Bandstand on Wednesday evenings from June twenty-fifth, twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, through August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, plus the Fourth of July and its rain date, July fifth of twenty twenty-five, from six PM to nine thirty PM.
Okay, I'll second that. Any further discussion? This is a complete application. There was nothing missing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I'll open up the next public hearing. The Wolfboro Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, January twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-five, at six thirty PM to consider a temporary event permit application for the New Hampshire Lakes Region Pickleball Club to host the Sadie Hawkins Day Pickleball Tournament on June twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, from seven AM to seven PM at the Foss Fields Tennis Courts and the Pickleball Court, closing courts for use of the public. Application two oh two five dash two. Is there anybody who would like to speak to this application? Come on up to the microphone and state your name.
My name is John DeForno.
Hold it. Wait a second. We got to turn the mic on for you.
My name is John DeForno, and I am a board member and vice president of the New Hampshire Lakes Region Pickleball Club, and I'm here to answer any questions concerning this tournament. And I'd like, again, for the, I think, the fifth year in a row, I'd like approval for this mostly local, mostly fun tournament. And it's one day, and basically, we call it the Sadie Hawkins Tournament because nobody gets to pick their partner. Theoretically, women are supposed to pick their men partner, but it's usually a computer that does the matchup. So, any questions?
No, let me see if there's anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this temporary event permit. Okay. Are you coming up, Christine? Okay.
Thanks, John.
Christine Collins, Wolfboro Parks and Rec Director. Sorry, I can't put this down. I'm too short. Okay, there we go. I think one of the things that was mentioned last year for these tournaments was talking about imposing a fee. I'm still working with Casey on doing a fee for that, but I hope to have it on the next month or so. So it's just something to consider before it is approved if we are requiring a fee as well. Do you think they are charging for these tournaments, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
So I think one of the issues facing the town is we're going to pay forty-six thousand dollars to resurface the courts, and it's just like our docs and some of the other places, charging a fee helps us offset that. So I think that's why we talked about it last time.
Also, it does because they are public courts. This is just a one-day tournament, but the other one they're requesting is a three-day tournament, which monopolizes all the courts, and they also, I believe, are using the basketball courts as well.
Okay. Let me finish with the public and then I'll come to us. Is there anybody else in the public who would like to give any comment? Hearing, seeing none. I'll close the public hearing. Board members. Paul?
Yeah, so I had two questions. One was on the fee. When will the fee be done? It says next month or so. I mean, what does that mean?
I don't have a specific date for you, but I'm currently working on it with Casey, and I will get you a date soon. So it's, we're looking at all fees, just not that one. I didn't realize they were doing their permit so early, but we're working on that fee as well. I will make it a top priority, but I don't have a current date.
So this is scheduled for twenty-one June. I don't want to inconvenience the applicant, but I also don't want to miss an opportunity, because Linda's right. I mean, we got to spend some money. And we did talk about this. When, you're good at this. When did we talk about this?
I think the last time it came in, which was probably last year about this time.
So, you know, so we're kind of out there a little bit. So I'd like to get some clarity on that. And the second was, are we all set with the insurance? Was, there's a notation here that we need to get insurance binder. Is that in? Up to the mic.
Yep.
You got to come up so everybody can hear you.
The insurance binder was sent electronically to Amy's office yesterday.
Okay.
From Avery Insurance.
Got it. All right, thank you.
And sometimes some of these organizations cannot get their insurance until, and it's contingent upon that happening.
You got it.
One of the things we could do, because I'm sure they're going to try it, want to advertise, we can grant the permit contingent upon them paying the fee when we establish the fee, or they can wait, and we can, in a couple months, we can table this and then look at it again in a couple months, and that's what...
It would be good to know, you know, as soon as possible, because we budgeted, we usually budget, especially the second, the longer term, and we budget that based upon what expenses we expect. And a lot of the money, a lot of the profit usually we put back into the community.
Yeah.
We're also going to be supporting the potential construction of the indoor pickleball facility, which will be free to all of the residents of, I'm sorry, all the students of Governor Wentworth. So we, you know, we're just...
I think we're trying to deal with the wear and tear on our surfaces.
Yeah, that's true.
Just one, we got a forty, forty-six thousand dollar thing we have to do. So we understand. So...
We don't have any objection. We just want to, you know, come to a good, a happy medium.
So, board members, what would you like to do? Should we table this for a couple months, once they get the fees and come back? Or would you feel comfortable approving it so they could go out and advertise, knowing that they are going to do that, not knowing what the fee is that we're going to come up with?
I would feel okay with approving a contingent upon a fee being established. I'm assuming we're going to have it, you know, we'd be able to have it voted on before, you know, in the next couple of months, probably, I would think, you know.
How about by March first?
About.
You commit to March first. Would that work for you?
I think that would work.
Other board members, are you okay with that?
Yep.
All right. So, somebody like to make a motion with that contingency on there?
Yeah, I'll do it. I'll make a motion to approve a temporary event permit for the New Hampshire Lakes Region Pickleball Club to host the Sadie Hawkins Day Pickleball Tournament on June twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, from seven AM to seven PM at the Foss Field Tennis and Pickleball Courts, closing the courts from use to the public, contingent upon fee being established by March first, two thousand and twenty-five.
And accepted.
I mean?
The fee being established and accepted?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. We're giving you the opportunity to say no if you don't want it.
But then the permit goes away?
Correct.
Okay. So I'm assuming that was a second by you, Paul?
Of course.
Okay. So I have a motion by Brad, a second by Paul. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The next public hearing, I will open up the public hearing where the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, January eighth, two thousand and twenty-five, at six thirty PM to consider a temporary event permit application for the New Hampshire Lakes Region Pickleball Club to host the tenth annual New Hampshire Lakes Region Pickleball Tournament on September fourth through September eighth, two thousand and twenty-five, from six AM to eight PM at the Foss Field Tennis Pickleball Courts, Basketball Courts, and Pavilion, and closing all facilities for use of the public for five days. Permit two oh two five dash oh three. Somebody like to speak to that?
Yeah, my name is John DeForno. I could speak to that application. Again, it's been a tenth, tenth go-around, and it's been a very successful tournament, both population-wise. I believe we attract over three hundred and some, three hundred, more than three hundred and fifty players, and probably half again as many, you know, family. And so it's become kind of a bellwether for our community to have that kind of event that attracts so many people. And it's, so we're just asking for you to go at it again, hopefully, with permission from the board.
Okay. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak to this temporary event, outdoor event permit?
Yeah, I think this is an increased, increased couple of days this year.
Well, the first, first day is set up. I don't think it's an increase per se. The first day is set up on Thursday. Usually, we don't take the whole day, but we would like to have that opportunity, because we have to do a lot of preparation of the courts to transit, to make transition courts. The Friday, Saturday, and Sunday are the play days. That's typical. And Monday is a rain day. So that basically ends up being five days, set up, three days of tournament, and then one potential rain day. So that's, that's the request and the proposal.
I don't know. I can't recall on that. Is there food trucks or anything? I think last year there were some issues where placement of food items were, it was, some things weren't disclosed. I just want to make sure. So this is the one where we're closing down all facilities using basketball courts?
Yes.
And then I think they did sell food, so we just want to make sure we know where those are going, if that's going to happen again this year prior to the event.
We expect to have a food truck on, available any one of those three days or all three of those days. And last year, we asked the Rotary Club to set up a grill to service players. So they, they were the mainstay of the, of the food, but we did have a food truck, I believe, two of the days. And we're hoping to be able, at least have one, one food facility per day for that tournament.
So, and that is either a food truck or, or the Rotary?
Yeah.
And we don't have that on the map, and I think we're starting to try to get to know how many food trucks and to get that part of the permit, so we don't get into food trucks. The parking rec, later on, is going to be coming and asking for that same thing. So we probably should have, you're having the pavilion? Are you going to put it by the pavilion? Are you going to, where do you locate? That's what we're trying to find out. What location?
Generally by the pavilion, but, you know, in an illegal parking spot.
Okay, so you're going to take one of the parking spots, not a handicap parking spot, by the pavilion to put your food truck?
Yeah.
Okay. So we know that. Does that work for parking rec?
I'm fine with it, but I think there was an issue with it with one of the businesses over on that side. I believe a generator was pretty loud, and they have outdoor seating next to the pavilion for their business, so they weren't really happy about it. So I don't know if there's anything we want to do that, or if we could locate it on the other side closer to the tennis courts in that other parking lot. But something to consider. But I, that's why I wanted to bring it forward, because I don't think it was disclosed last year where it was going to go, and that's why there was an issue. So maybe if it's pre-decided, it might not be a problem.
So are you talking, you would prefer it in the Glendon Street parking lot?
It might be better over there, because then you're not competing with businesses on the other side.
Okay. So the food truck and any food, is there electricity over there at all?
There, there is over, closer to, because we used to do our movies over there, and then you have the tennis hut. So there is some sort of electricity. We'd have to look at that. Also, I think, did you guys rent porta-potties for this event? Because there were so many people. Okay, so that, is that on there as well? Location and where that is?
Is there any other comments from anybody in the public? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing.
So I would like a detailed map. When I, when the EDC does Lake Winnipesaukee Day, we have a detailed map that shows where vendors are, where parking is going to be shut off, where everything is done, and I'm required to do that. And I just have a bird's eye view of a location, which really doesn't tell me a heck of a lot. The other question I have is, what do you do on the baseball field and in the...
They aren't asking for the baseball field.
Hold on. Can I finish? What, are you doing anything on the baseball field or on the playground?
Um, no.
So those can be used by the public if they, if they come down?
Yeah.
Okay. Because it makes it seem like, just the wording that we're closing down, all of it, yes. People, the public should know that the baseball field is open if little kids want to play on it, and the playground's open if little kids want to play on it.
Exactly.
Because there might be kids watching their grandparents or parents playing pickleball. So they should know that those things will be available to them.
Yeah, they ask for the Foss Field Tennis Court, Tennis Pickleball Courts, Basketball Court, and Pavilion. So those are the things, and only those are being shut down.
I just want to make sure that everybody understands that not the, not the whole park is closed down.
But I agree with you, Brian, that we need a map. So, and we need the whole event laid out, I think, is that...
I think it would help them, too, when they advertise. They can have a whole, it's like going to Disney World or Santa's Village. This is where this is, and this is, and this is.
Well, I think we also can give that to parking rec, and I think that's, using our facility, we should know where those things are. Anybody else have any...
This is also subject to fees?
Absolutely.
Brad?
Yeah, there was one other thing in here, too. Checked off for the tents and canopies, which you show, you're going to set some up over by the tennis court. Permit is required for that. So I would assume that means going through the fire, fire chief to make sure there, is any, for whatever reason, if they're fire retardant, if they need to be, or whatever, they need to know what type of pop-ups are going there and stuff like that. What I assume was why they would be a permit required, so they're... so they're made aware of what is going up there. That should probably be shown on the map too.
Yes.
So, we prepare a detailed map of?
I think so.
I think that'd be good.
And the other thing I might, I think we should look at is the onsite and offsite parking, so we get an idea of what parking spaces that are available and what parking spaces are really for the businesses down there. So, if you can do that, and we probably should table this. One, you got a little more time because this is a September event. And you come back with that, and hopefully, we can work on those fees, and maybe we can have the fee and your map.
Yeah.
Does that, okay with you?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, one more, sorry.
Sure, Brian.
Was trash an issue in any of the past years? Or who takes care of all your trash in and out?
We generally take care of the extra trash that's not, and basically, we've done the trash hauling ourselves.
Okay.
Occasionally, we've gotten some help from the maintenance department because of, you know, the volume of it, but we basically take it on the responsibility ourselves.
Okay. So, are DPWs helped out before?
Yeah, but we haven't requested it, you know, they've helped us. But it's something that we take responsibility for.
As it grows, it's something that you, just make sure you keep on top of it. Because we have had our own struggle at Lake Winnipesaukee Day.
We burn around with trash bags.
Yes.
They're always available to collect trash. I may have lovely photographs of these two characters moving trash.
But, you know, we can, we take full responsibility for that.
Dumpster broom.
I believe, I believe that we basically cleaned up all the extra boxes and trash, and took out the extra, anything overflowed coming out of those bins, we?
Grab them and take it.
Oh, yeah, we make sure they don't, that doesn't blow around.
Perfect.
So, you're going to give us spots for food trucks, tents, parking in your layout? And we'll have the whole thing? Okay. Board members, I need somebody to make a motion to table this temporary event?
Second.
What, second? Oh, I got to do that, okay. I made the motion, Brian, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you. I'd like to open up the next public hearing. The Wolfboro Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, January 8th, 2025, at 6:30 p.m. to consider a temporary event permit application for the New England Chapter Antique and Classic Boat Society to host the 51st Annual Winnipesaukee Boat Show on July 26th, 2025, from 6:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Town Dock's Parking Lot, Cape Park Community Bandstand, closing them from use of the public. Permit number 2025-04. Is there anybody here to speak to that event? Well, thank you.
I'm Donnie McLean. I'm a board member with the local chapter of the Antique and Classic Boat Society. And we would like to continue what we've been doing for the last number of years, using the parking lot and the docks. We do leave roughly 475 feet of docks available to the public. The boat ramp is left available to the public. And it's just a reiteration of what we have been doing since we started here in Wolfboro many years ago.
Okay. Is there anybody in the public who'd like to give us any comments on this permit? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members, looks like we need an insurance policy. And are you one that can?
Yeah.
Get it just at the end?
They don't issue a certificate of insurance until 30 days before the event.
Okay. So, we'll have to put that contingency in there. Is there any other comments, concerns? Hearing none from the board, I need a motion.
Move to approve a temporary event permit application for the New England Chapter Antique and Classic Boat Society to host the 51st Annual Lake Winnipesaukee Boat Show on July 26th, 2025, from 6:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Town Dock's Parking Lot, Cape Park, and the Community Bandstand, closing them for use of the public. Permit number 2025-04. This permit is contingent upon an insurance certificate issued within 30 days of the event.
Second.
And I have, do you have a date? I mean, a time when you need the parking lot closed? Or do you take care of it?
Generally, it's closed at midnight on the Friday night.
Okay, so you want to?
We put placards up, and just so that people know, they have to have the cars out by Saturday morning early. But it's generally noted that it's closed at midnight.
Okay, and you put up those notices?
We do, yeah.
Okay. And we're okay in putting up the mo, you want to add that, Brian?
No, what I just want to make sure is that we make sure we have consistency when other events happen during the summer where the parking lot is required to stay open till 3 o'clock, when it would be easier to shut it down earlier in the day.
But the event started later in the day. This one starts in the morning is the difference. So, I think we are being consistent. I think there needs to be, they wanted to close the parking lot at 12:00 a.m.? Is the board comfortable with adding that to the motion? Okay. Any other comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, well, I'm, here we go to the next one. I'd like to open up the next public hearing. The Wolfboro Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, January 8th, 2025, at 6:30 p.m. to consider a temporary event permit application for the Wolfboro Vintage Boat Race Regatta to host the 14th Wolfboro Vintage Boat Race Regatta on September 11th, 12th, 13th, 2025, from 6:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the Town Dock's Parking Lot, Cape Park Community Bandstand, closing them from use of the public. Permit 2025-05. Is there anybody who'd like to speak to that? Good.
I'm Donnie McLean. I am a co-chairman of the Vintage Race Boat Regatta here in Wolfboro. We hope to continue what we've been doing in the past here in Wolfboro. Our first regatta was in the year 2000, followed in 2001. And then we went to an every-other-year format, bringing us to, this will be our 14th event in Wolfboro. And it'll be a carbon copy, for all intents and purposes, of all the events we've hosted before.
Okay, is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this temporary event permit? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members, I have one thing I think we may want to add in asking them is to have a sign up saying the dock and ramp will be closed the weekend prior to the event. I think we've had some people who are wanting to take the boat out from the season and doesn't, don't know that we're going to close that down. So, if we could get some signage up, and I think September 5th is the Friday before that weekend.
So, then we'll put the signage up?
If you would.
I'd be glad to.
Okay.
Just stating that the?
The ramp, and then put them up on a couple, I'm saying that it should be closed down and for the length of time.
Would be glad to do that and can do that.
Okay.
And we're good, what time's the parking lot going to be closed?
We start staging boats over there on Thursday. Now, of course, it's, we're asking for all-day Thursday on the permit here. But we generally actually start bringing the boats over there about noon time.
So, what time would you like?
You have to have it, you have to have it closed down Wednesday night at midnight.
Yeah, you're probably right, not that, Brian, yeah.
You can't have cars on the way when they show up with a whole slew of boats.
But Wednesday night, to that point?
Yep.
Is when it close, is when you think it should be closed, midnight?
That would certainly make the way clear for the work that we have to do on Thursday, sure.
Are you seeing an increased number in participants in the boat racing? Or decreased number, or?
We've seen a little bit of a lag in participation in the last two or three years. And now, we are seeing a very good increase on what we'll be able to do, yeah.
Excellent.
So, we have more. Yep.
Okay, so Wednesday night, it's still the same issue? You're not going to get an insurance certificate for 30 days beforehand? Is that?
The major sponsor for this event is the museum, the New Hampshire Boat Museum, and their insurance renews in July. And so, we can get that after their insurance renews.
We need to make that a contingency.
Yep.
Other than that, I'm good.
Okay. Is anybody brave enough to make the motion on this one?
I was just going to add one other thing there was if Donna's been made aware of the staff comments and review there about a detail officer being there at all? Are you aware, the police department?
Yeah, well, we do, I know this, there was one year, one event, maybe two or three events ago, where there was some problem with representation. And we did cover it, but it wasn't through the Wolfboro Department. However, we have been working with the police department, and we do pay a pretty good fee to the, to the fire department and the police department. So, I know we'll have the detail.
Yep.
And the comment is just make sure you connect with them?
And we will, yes.
And you keep the, for the fire, yep.
And Public Works had put a comment in here about possibly needing more trash cans down there?
I haven't heard that.
Haven't heard that one, that's, had that under the Public Works? I don't know if there was a problem with overflow previous years or not, or?
If so, I haven't been made aware of that. And I don't know if Bill, Bill Markison may have, but he's out of town, that's why.
Do you want to make contact with parking wreck, I mean, Public Works and find out what they mean by that?
Yep, I would be glad to.
And all of that information will be contained in the letter you receive with the permit, outlining the requirements by the department heads.
Thank you.
Okay. Who wants to make the motion?
I'll try it.
Okay, Paul, thank you.
I'd like to motion to issue a temporary event permit application for the Wolfboro Vintage Boat Race Regatta to host the 14th Wolfboro Vintage Boat Race Regatta on September 11th, 12th, and 13th, 2025, from 6:00 a.m. to 5:00, at the Town Docks. Town Dock Parking Lot will be closed from Wednesday night, September 10th, at midnight, and will reopen on September 14th at midnight. That gives you time.
Okay.
At the Cape Park Community Bandstand, closing them for the public. All right, permit number 2025-04. This permit is contingent upon receipt of a certificate of insurance on or after July 1st. But not, yeah, on or after July 1st, we'll leave it there.
And can you add in the placing of signs on the Town Dock and by the ramp that forming the public that this ramp will, this area will be closed, and they'll be up by September 5th?
Yeah.
Okay.
September 5th is good.
Okay. Any further, Paul made the motion?
Yeah, that's fine, September 5th is the Friday.
That's right.
The Friday.
Because people, that's just, you know, that's Labor Day weekend.
Right.
So, I figure by Friday, if we?
We're going to catch a lot of thought leadership for that, and that's a different issue.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, you got your permits?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Here we go with the last temporary event permit public hearing. I'll open up the public hearing. Wolfboro Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, January 8th, 2025, at 6:30 p.m. to consider a temporary event permit application for the Wolfboro Park and Recreation to host a food truck during the morning of Abenaki Ski Races on January 19th, January 26th, February 15th, March 29th, 2025, from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. at the Abenaki Ski Area, 390 Pine Hill Road, Permit 2025-06. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this permit?
Good evening, Bo Betts from Wolfboro Parks and Rec. We're seeking permission to allow the use of a food truck during our ski races at Abenaki Ski Area for the listed dates. I can't say we will have one for each of those dates, but I did list them just in case we are able to acquire a food truck or trailer for those races. As you know, we are the host of multiple ski races at Abenaki throughout the season that are sponsored by the Abenaki Outing Club. Some of these races, we see over 200 racers with well over 500 spectators. It gets very busy. We are looking to have a food truck in the morning to kind of help us out at the lodge. We don't typically open the grill until 11:00 a.m. So, this food truck would be at the base of the hill. If you're standing at the bottom of the hill, to the right by the maintenance building. It would be up on the snow. We would have the proper fencing around the trailer or truck to protect it from any sort of accident. People would be able to walk up, walk up to it, or even ski up to it potentially. And it would just help us out in the morning. It would serve items that we typically don't sell, coffee, breakfast items, cocoa, and things like that.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this temporary event permit? Hearing, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, board members? My only comment is, once you do establish where that's going to be, that we get some kind of a map?
Absolutely.
You know?
It's hard right now because we don't have snow.
Yeah.
So, I have an idea of where I want to put it. But if we do get a snowstorm, and then that kind of throws a wrench on our plan.
That would be good, because then that would be consistent with what we ask from others.
Sure, yep.
Okay. Board members, any comments, concerns? If not, can I have a motion?
Move to issue a temporary event permit application for the Wolfboro Parks and Rec to host a food truck during the morning of Abenaki Ski Races on 119, 126, 215, and 312, 2025, from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. at Abenaki Ski Area, 390 Pine Hill Road, Permit number 2025-06, contingent upon a map with location of the truck.
I'll second that. I'll second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome. Next item on the agenda is the Bulk Vote Weekly Manifest, December 20th, 2024, $268,053.93. December 27th, 2024, $101,720.24. And those were all 2024 expenses. We're going to have one on January 2nd, 2025, which is a 2024 expense, which is $213,612.67. And then one January 3rd, which is all 2026, 25 expenses, We have a tent to cut, and that's it. Does any board members have any concerns? Hearing none, does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll move to approve the Bulk Vote Items A and B.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Brad, second by Brian, all those in favor?
Aye.
We have no board or committee appointments. Next thing is new business, a discussion of Christopher Court, Jason Way counter petition warrant article.
Madam Chair, I'm going to recuse myself from this one, as I did in the previous meeting.
Okay. Paul is also going to go, which leaves hello down there.
So, this is a counter petition to not lay out Christopher's Court and Jason's Way. As you recall, back in December, we held public hearings regarding Christopher Court and Jason's Way. Understand that a petition to lay out a roadway only requires a petition of one person for that to come forward. Once that comes forward, the Board of Selectmen take it under consideration. There was discussions with? There was discussions with representation of the petitioner, who indicated that they were interested in bringing this road, or these two roads, up to town standards by way of betterment assessment. As a result of that, myself, the Director of Public Works, worked with the representation of the association. We worked with legal counsel, and we followed our policy for petitions to lay out a new town road. You went through the public hearing. You determined to move forward with a warrant article to conditionally lay out the roadway, subject to a betterment assessment. That work, which has been done, still requires a bond hearing before it's put on to the warrant, and approval by the Board of Selectmen and the Budget Committee to garner support moving forward. Concurrent to all of this taking place, which we have not held the bond hearing, we received a counter petition requesting that we not lay out the roadway. A counter petition needs to be a minimum of, a majority of those individuals who would receive betterment from the roadway. The petition that, the counter petition that we received represents a party, parties of five. Therefore, it does not meet the burden of majority to kill the initial petition to lay out the roadway. But I think it does show that there's concern in the neighborhood. Not sure how the board would like to handle this with only two of you represented this evening to be able to do anything. I don't think there's a whole lot you need to do, because it does not meet the burden of the majority.
So Jim, my question is, does it, it says the burden of the majority, which means six out of 10 would have to say that. Five out of 10 being a 50% does not allow it to go forward?
Correct.
That's how I read it also.
And that, that was the interpretation I received from legal counsel.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know if our legal counsel had weighed in and said, 50% is right on the line. Is it, you know, I'm like, is it 50% or more, or 50? Yeah, so it has to be 51% of the people.
Yeah, and he, greater than 50%. He also did research any case law and found nothing that laid out anything in this type of a scenario to fall back onto.
And that's right in the memo that Jim sent to us.
Yes.
His opinion that, and we also, a number of percent equaling more than half of the total 50% is not half.
I, I want people, just so everybody understands.
Yeah, yeah.
And my, um, my only other concern is, with a very, very split vote like this, it's going to be a difficult situation going either direction.
Well, we can't do anything about that. We've done and followed the procedure. We agreed that we would lay it out. We have a warrant article hearing on the 15th. They came in the timeframe with the counter petition, and it, you know, it didn't pass. So it goes forward, knowing that that's the case. We did receive a letter from a Thomas Miller. I can either read it, or he would like it added to the minutes. I don't know how you feel.
Just add it to the minutes. I talked to him for-
I talked to him too, so I'm more than comfortable just adding it to the minutes than the time, since there's no discussion on the other side.
Yep.
So that will, can you put this letter with that counter petition?
I will.
Okay. So we don't need to take a vote?
Nope.
All righty. We'll move on to-
Guess it's up the board's discretion if you want to-
This is not a public hearing. No, no, this is not a public hearing. This is just whether it met the criteria for, uh, to a counter petition, and whether it was valid, and the decision was it was not valid. Wait, 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 wait. You're not recognized, you need to sit down.
Um, Linda, this will be discussed at the deliberative session.
We, they can come, we're going to hold a public hearing on the petition to lay out the road, the warrant article, next Wednesday, the 15th, at 5:00. At that point, I will take public hearing, and you can make all the comments you want at that particular time. You know, those are questions that Jim will have to answer, and we'll have that at the public hearing?
That is correct. Right now, I do not believe there are any additional expenses other than the noticing of the public hearing, which has been done. And Amy is tracking what those costs are.
So we'll have any extra costs, if there are any, that we can let people know at that public hearing?
That will be known at, yeah, I can make that known at the public hearing, absolutely.
I, I really can't take any public hearing comments from the audience. Our decision is to close it down. This is not a public hearing. Asking you to come to the meeting on the 15th and the bond hearing, and we will take all those public comments. This is just saying, was the petition valid? Had the number signatures? And the answer is, no, it did. The counter petition did not meet the statute.
Yes, yes. It only requires a petition of one to lay out a roadway. So anybody can submit a petition to lay out a roadway, and it only requires one signature.
So, and this is the counter, because only one person can do it, then the other people have a right to say, no, we don't agree. When we did, uh, when it was Saki Estates, the developer owned 40, uh, 26 of the lots. The homeowners association had 25, they had 25 people sign. A counter petition came in, and we could not lay out the road. So we followed this procedure before. It's, it, uh, it's, we don't have control. It is a state statute that tells us exactly the steps we have to take, and that's what we followed. There's an RSA, it's, it's run by the state on how we have to behave. Uh, he did some original work on the construction of that area, and being very conscious of being, letting all people know that he had gotten some financial benefit from doing that work, he chose on his own to step down. Okay. All righty, we can move on. Next item on the agenda is the commercial vehicle landing permit, the Millie B. It says that June 1st, they will provide the new insurance policy. And it looks like it is, they owe us money on January 10th. Is there any questions and concerns? Hearing none, can I look?
Just a, yeah, just a question. So, um, may or may not be related to this, but we, we're looking at fees as a general proposition across the town? Is this one of the places where we're looking at fees? It will be one of the places that we're looking at fees going forward. Okay, so this, kind of the same thing we were doing with, with the pickleball. Is this a, is this a, is due June 10th? Is this a fee? I don't think this will be done before the season. All right, that's fine. Got it? All right. I, I would, I would say that our goal is to get these adjusted as part of the work plan over the summer, so that next year at this time, we have new fees in place.
Is that okay? Any other comments, concerns? Hearing none, can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the issuance of the, approval of the vest, commercial vessel landing permit for the Millie B for the 2025 season.
I'll second that. So I have a motion by Brad, seconded by Linda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, the next item on the agenda is the town of Brookfield is requesting to have beach passes. They did a trial program last year. They had seven families check out multiple passes. And I guess Christine, you're here, and you want to give us any feedback on how it worked for your department?
Uh, we didn't have any issues with it. We utilized it like we do for the hotels. They had like a hotel pass, so they were just showing them at the gate. I believe they were checking them out at the town hall. We gave them 10 passes total.
It was 10 passes, okay.
And my staff recorded them. There were no issues, no complaints, no problems.
Okay, thank you. I know we have some people here from Brookfield. Does one of you want to tell us how the people of Brookfield felt about it?
I'm Rich Sacker, one of the selectmen from over in Brookfield, and it worked very well from our perspective, and, and the people really enjoyed having access to the beach. So we requested you continue the program.
Okay.
And we're going to, and we're going to, we're going to give Jan credit for pulling this one off.
Yeah, she, she did an excellent job.
Okay. Board members, anybody have any questions?
One question.
Brian?
Did you keep track of how many times the permits were pulled?
Yes, we did.
I hoped you would.
And I think at one time, we had a total of three out at one time. The program was, you could take it out for a week.
Yep.
So you could use it during that week. And in one period, we had three of them being used. So that's the most we used in one period of time, three.
Any other questions, comments?
I just want to make a comment that the, the way this thing started was done in a very collegial way. It was nice to see Parks and Rec and everybody get engaged in it. It felt good at the beginning, and it feels good now. That, that sounds a little schlucky, but I mean it. So thanks. Hope it, hope you get benefit out of this coming in.
Okay. Does a board member want to make a motion to grant Brookfield 10 passes? Okay, I made the motion. Paul seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Next item on the agenda is the pop whale and fees parking director.
I wouldn't want to live in your house. I wouldn't want to be in that neighborhood. At Field of McCoys.
So as I think you recall, we've been having discussions regarding making the adjustments to the pop whale and fee structure. Had numerous conversations with the Parks and Rec Director and the Operations Manager. They as well worked with Casey, the Assistant Town Manager, to review the rates, as well as review the expenses associated with operations of the arena. I think that they have come forward with a proposal that will get us much closer to breaking even going forward. That's all with the understanding that we are able to hold to the budget. As I think everybody's aware, we had difficulties holding to the budget in 2024. And 2025 has not started out very good for us with a problem with the compressor, but we're going to work on capturing that. Christine is here with Brian Paul to speak to the rates and their recommendations for rate adjustments to try and get this thing to a break even point. Christine?
So the proposal you have before you, we based the revenue on the seven months that were in operation of ice making. We didn't base any of the revenue off of off-season, just so you're aware. We are requesting that we increase the rates of prime to 255 an hour and non-prime 235 an hour. So that's an increase of $5 on the hourly rate. The big difference is, is that we want to change our prime time hours and our non-prime hours. And so right now, our prime hours are Friday night, 4:00 PM through Sunday. And then it starts back, non-prime is Monday. So we only have the weekends and then Friday night. Typical rinks, it's after, like 3:00 o'clock on for prime hours during the week, and then weekend hours. And then we'll have non-prime hours before 6:00 AM to try to get that morning slot, and after 10:00 PM to try to get people to utilize that evening slot. So we get more people trying to use those slots. So that will change what currently, most of our users that we have are using non-prime slots, but it will actually be prime slots. And prime slots are typically the slots that are popular. Everybody's trying to get those slots, right? So that's why we changed that. Looking at, I did give you that sheet at the end that has totaled, so it has all the users in there currently, and that's what they have requested for this season. The total hours, though, can be a little misleading at the bottom, because it is including, including the stick and public, which shouldn't be counted in those fees, because we already know what we're getting for that price. We've already included that. So it, I subtracted it out, so it would be a total that we have already sold would be 199 of non-prime hours and 676 of prime hours that we have in the books right now that people have requested. We currently are still accepting, if people want to buy more ice, we are accepting that as well. Also in here, we did propose the off-ice rate. So we currently do have off-ice, off-ice rates of, I think if you rent the whole facility, it's 16, between 1,200 and 1,600. And then we have hourly rates. I think the one thing, I know we put in there, the Operation Manager, one of the things we're looking at is, it's a case-by-case basis. Because in some situations, can Parks and Rec sell concessions? Are we closing the whole facility? Can we still use some of the side rooms? So I think it does warrant a conversation with each user who's trying to rent that facility to understand, is it à la carte? Are they using all the rooms? Are they just using the rink? Are they using the locker rooms that are available? And are they selling concessions? Is it a nonprofit? So I think those are things that are more case-by-case, having discussions with them to figure out what the fee would be.
Okay. Board members?
Just a couple of, you want to go?
No, you can go on.
You go first.
Well, one thing is, I think that we have to have, I don't like that, oh, we're going to do this or do that or something. If we have to go by hour and define things better, that's okay. We have here, the whole facility is $1,600 a day, and it is 75 cents an hour.
$75.
I mean, $75 an hour.
Yeah.
Sorry. And I think if we got, if there's going to be more for concessions, we need to have those fees, so they're all laid out there. Then you can mix them up.
Okay.
And come up with a price. But I think we have the, the, we should, as a board, set the, the fees for you then to put together and whatever.
So we'll submit that with our fee structure. We'll, we'll submit that with it. Okay.
Okay, Paul. And I have a few after you're done.
Checking to bump.
See, if you get them, if you get them, I won't.
So, so just that I'm clear. So what you did is you went out and you got some comparables from other-
So what you did is you went out and you got some comparables from other arenas, so we checked the box that says, looks like best practices.
Correct.
Or I wouldn't say, it's comparables. We know that we can't forecast anything but a break even operation for the pop whaling. That's the way the budget process, the state requires us to do that. And so what would be great for me, and I know that you can't, we can't use this to tell Sam how to pencil in the numbers for next year, but I think it would be great for me, if you're willing to do it, is to put down on a piece of paper, like an income statement, here's the revenues we expect, and you got them all in here, here's the expenses we expect, and, and I will observe that roughly 25% of your revenues are what I would call un, what do you call it? Where they're not, they're not fully identified. They're unidentified.
That, that's it. There are some not identified.
Let's call it a plug, okay? So 25% of your revenues appear to be a plug. And that's not meant to be mean spirited. It's just meant to say that, you know, you've articulated how you expect to get revenues from the lease of ice time and all of that, but about 25% of the number needs to get gotten. Fine. You could put all of this on an income statement, one piece of paper, that would be awesome. And then we could use that on a go-forward basis, just to kind of check in with each other, either monthly, quarterly, or whatever you folks, Jim thinks is the right thing to do. And then we have a mechanism to watch, track, now, adjust, whatever the right words are. As opposed to, I think what we've been doing in the past, and it's not meant to be critical, is wait until the numbers show up and then explain what we didn't do. That's a bad model for me. I'd much rather say, here's what we think we can do, and we either came up better or we missed, but here's our theory as to how we get better. I think that would be awesome. Thank you.
That's exactly what I kind of did here.
Oh, stop it.
So the other thing I noticed, Christine, you have other income. Is that the income you get when I pay $6 to go? That we should label it as that?
Yeah, I think it is, there's an asterisk at the bottom. I believe that is stating what that is.
Yep, skate rental.
It says skate rental, stick time, public skating, and any other programs we offer. So if we do, no concessions.
But don't you have a, no certain amount you're going to get from the, for the rental, for people skating? I'm less concerned about public, for the concession. I want to know in terms of, we pay X amount for the, on an hour, but you're collecting even more money than off.
Right, that is, that 35,000, that's what that is.
That's only that.
That's only that. That's public, stick, and skate rentals. That's what that is. We're accounting for that.
So that should be public fees.
If we want to call it public fees, we can, yes.
I would like it called public fees.
We can call it public fees, sure.
It just really, because then it's, because it.
I'm sorry, the asterisk was small on the bottom, but that's what that was alluding to. That's what it was.
Yeah, I didn't particularly see that. It just seems to be, because up above there, there's.
Can I ask you?
Yep.
Why?
Why?
What you want to call it, public fees?
Because I want the.
Because you see, yes, other income, so and there's an asterisk. So we'll call it the public fees.
I don't like other income.
Because the public is paying extra money. They're paying this in taxes and they're paying also that to go on to the ice.
Well, the users, not anyone who shows up to use it as the user.
So the way I process this is that 35,000, which is a plug or something, has all of these things in it, and if those are going to be, you know, fees collected above, you know, public fees, that's fine, call them that.
Okay.
I agree with you. I'm just not a big believer in the words like other.
Okay, I just changed it. I'll put it in. I'll type it, but I just wrote it on my screen.
It just, it will be easier for us to explain.
Yes.
That's all I'm looking at it, you know.
So the way, the way I did the math, 110 roughly of the 435 is in this little itty-bitty set of lines. Nowhere near as excruciating detail as what you got for the stuff up above. I think the stuff up above is good. Work on the stuff down below by generating a lot of activity, and that'll be fun to look at.
Okay.
Other.
I believe Brian would like to speak upon what we're talking about as well.
Not me.
I looked down here for him.
Brian, get up there. Just go ahead.
Sorry, Brian, I looked down there for him.
Just get him up there.
You were looking at me and talking about him. I was like, huh.
So I sort of did what you actually were just talking about.
You did?
For the month of December, I actually did all of the revenue. And if I base it on right now, what our rates are, and next year's proposed budget, just for the month of December, our revenue was over 14, almost $14,000 above what it needed to be for, to keep the budget. So if we can do that for seven months of ice, then anything we do in the summertime is bonus.
Let's not call it bonus. Let's call it incremental revenue that we really want to have to protect us from downside.
Exactly.
Sounds good. I'll take that. Make us, make it through the bad years.
That's, that's, we're banking. We want to bank money.
And, and that's actually the reason why, when I wrote in the thing of me being able to negotiate with summer groups to come in, because we've had zero income in the summer in usage, where right now, I've got five or six groups that want to come in, but $1,600 is going to throw them, is going to tell them, sorry, we can't afford it. You know, it just doesn't pay for them to do it.
Well, we can go give you an hourly rate. We could give you something that you can mix and match and, and do that negotiating.
So, but, so I did kind of, and I've been doing it for January also now with the same idea with the revenue, just to kind of give me an idea. So as of the 8th today, we are at 50% of our, what we need for revenue to make this year's budget if we can, if the budget stands what it is, at the $435,000. And it's only eight days in. So where's the break even?
Okay. We'd like to see that. Go ahead.
Can I ask an unrelated but related question?
Sure.
Like a Christine, she's, oh, here it goes. So you've been, you've been out cold calling, trying to find people who may want to take advantage of the facility.
Correct.
What do you hear that gives you either encouragement or gives you a need for caution? What are you getting for feedback?
The big concern is for events, the lack of hotels, inns, room-wise in the area. That's the drawback. The other drawback is a lot of people don't know this place even exists. You know, the advantage to it is, when I show them pictures of the place, they say, wow, that place looks gorgeous. So we have a gorgeous location that a lot of people just don't know exists.
And then maybe next time, when we get together and look at your plan for the, you know, the outlook, is what are you going to do to deal with that? You don't have to do that one now, but you've just told me what.
Well, just to give you an idea, just to give you an idea, something that I have actually just talked to USA Hockey about for next year is doing a, I'm naming it the Leaf Peepers Series, of doing eight different tournament weekends, starting in mid-September to go through October. A couple of weekends, we're skipping like Columbus Day and stuff because those are just too busy around this area and stuff, and having eight to 10 teams, because I think this area can, can support eight to 10 teams at a time. And they're going to go ahead and sanction that, and hopefully that information will get out to everybody that I'm going to start getting up, from the Canadian teams to American teams to come in and try to fill the location in early September and October, that we didn't have that revenue last year. And then in the summertime, I've got, you know, a wrestling event that they're just going to confirm the date, an artisan craft fair, they're going to confirm the date this week, the community yard sale that we put out there, that we've already gotten, six or seven people have already signed up for, street hockey for the kids. I've talked to the Abenaki Lacrosse, they're, they want to do the indoor lacrosse in July and August. So we're going to try to fill the place.
Thank you for letting me ask that off, off-topic question. I appreciate it.
Yeah, it's good, and thank you.
I just want us to generate activity.
I think it's great that he has got those ideas and some things signed up. That's exactly what we were looking for.
Thank you.
Thank you, both of you. I need a motion to approve the 2025-2026 ice rates, and whoever makes the motion, so you don't say I've done it, can read that, that motion. Okay, boys, which one?
I mean, Brad, get out of there. Do it.
And I'll make a motion to approve the proposed 2025-2026 rates, the 2025-2026 season rates of prime at 255 per hour and non-prime at 235 per hour, with a definition as described for the hours of designating between prime and non-prime on the presentation that Christine gave us.
Second.
Any further discussion?
And these, these prices that are being set are going forward, they're not retroactive. How does that all work mechanistically?
Correct, it's any new contracts that come in, so it would be moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thanks, guys.
Next item is the revenue and default.
So you received an updated package this afternoon regarding the estimated revenues and the revised default budget. We had some questions regarding the ambulance contract. We got that clarified. As a result, you will see a significant change within the default budget compared to the one that you had received previously, I believe it was on Monday. So Casey and Sam have worked on this. They got legal advice on a couple of items. So the new default budget is $33,650,63. That's compared to the current proposed budget, which is at the Budget Committee of $35,984,847, or a difference of $2,334,784. I know that you got this late, so I'm not sure if you want more time to review it or if you'd like to vote on it at this time.
Question?
Yep.
So thanks for the, for the audible on this, which is good, but maybe just a, and maybe it's in here, Jim, and if it is, I apologize. Maybe just a walk that says, what has been, what would come out if we went into a default budget? Maybe the numerics, is it in here?
Yeah.
Because I'm having trouble finding it.
It is this piece that.
Yeah, this thing here?
Yeah, because when I read that, that's when I asked the question. If you looked at the first one we got, the default budget was going to have the ambulance contract in.
Yeah.
And I said, whoa, whoa, explain to me that. And as you see, the second set, that's not in, because that was a warrant article and it was a one-time item, and one-time items can't go back in. I was trying to figure out whether we had signed a contract in 2024 that allowed it or it did not.
That it had a multi-year appropriation and it wasn't. It was a one-time shot.
Yeah.
Okay.
One-time shots come out and.
Got it. So is it, should I withdraw my ask on having a walk or what?
No, if you.
I don't want to create more staff work, just to satisfy my selfish needs.
Have you, did you look at this?
I did, but I haven't looked at it deeply. All right, I won't, I'm withdrawing my ask.
Does anybody else have an issue? You can still have your ass fall.
Could I give pardon? What'd you say?
Can you read the whole thing to us?
Line by line?
Yeah.
And then can I think about it as you go?
And, and the, it's clear, though, the estimated revenues, that's done. That's as of a couple of days ago, right? We're done with those.
Correct.
Okay. So the real question for this, this particular individual is.
Are you comfortable making the motion? We can either make it, well, doesn't the Budget Committee want it for tomorrow night?
They would like it for tomorrow night.
All right. I'm going to make the motion to approve the 2025 default budget in the amount of $33,650,63.
Second.
Okay, I made the motion. Brian made the loudest, second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is the route 28 warrant articles. And I will pass out to you all an example of the March 13th, 2012 ballot. And I followed up with a call to Pat, and as you can see on that ballot, number 30 had multiple questions, yes and no. I asked Pat whether our machine could handle the warrant articles, the way we voted them on December 13th, and she didn't know anything or any reason why that could not happen. So I wanted to make sure you had that information before we started this discussion.
So that's, that's where I was originally. That's why I had broken it originally into four separate warrant articles, figuring that we could just take the, the four questions, put them underneath one article, and have a yes or no for each. That's one way we can do it. Another way we can do it is, like the default and regular budget goes, you approve the budget. If you, if the budget is not approved, then it automatically becomes a default budget. So we can do it if it's, it's either, it can be, are you in favor of a roundabout? If your answer is no, then it reverts to, it gets constructed as a minimum build in place, as is. So there's, there's many way, many ways we can cook this egg.
Well, I think we already made a decision. You and I sat down, I gave all the exams, I think I gave them to you four times, four different ways in which it could be written. You and I sat down, we concocted, we put together, I shouldn't say concocted, we put together the warrant articles that we talked about on December 30th. The board wanted a change in terms of, I think you wanted to add able, and then if necessary.
Yeah.
And we made that change, that voted in, and that was approved. So, and I.
So I, I talked to Jason A., and you've got a letter from him today, and he's a gentleman who's been steering the ship from the state, and let's see what he said. He said.
I didn't see him say anything.
In the above warrant article about Pickering Corner, we had a talk about the size of trucks that would have to traverse the center of the roundabout. You stated the original more specific wording was preferred by you. Am I correct? That was a question I asked Jason. He said, I don't have a preference. You could write is necessary, may need, or expected. He thought that able to did not explain it correctly.
I don't see him saying.
Go, go to the next one. Either way, the vehicle, so then he goes, the following vehicles will need, and he underlines and he italicizes it. So never once in his two explanations does he do able, because able is different than need. I am able to walk across this room. I don't need to walk across this room. I need to do something is a requirement. A ladder truck will need to go through the roadway. Semantics and words matter. Maybe not to everybody, but to me, they matter.
And we took a vote, we had the wording. So in order for us to change the vote, one of us who voted yes needs to make a motion that we reopen that vote. Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion? Okay. So we are comfortable staying with what we have. All righty.
Can I continue something?
One question on this. I think we've talked about it, but I don't know if we have an answer. And I did notice on your article that you presented to us here, this warrant article we're proposing to put out, is this going to be non-binding or is this going to be a binding warrant article?
All non-money warrant articles are non-binding.
Non-binding referendum.
Thank you. I just wanted to confirm that.
Anything else?
Brian spoke up.
Great, Paul.
Well, if he wants to, I just need him to ask to be recognized.
So I went back, and I just want to clarify some things for the folks at home. I went back and I found the minutes from December 5, 2019, which were a summary of the work done by the First Steering Committee. In that document, it actually says project history. Jason Ayotte and David Ford explained the project history. The town of Wolfboro master plan began in 2007, and the corridor study was developed between 2010 and 2017, included several public forums. Jason Ayotte outlined the limits and scope of the work for segments 1 through 4 as discussed in the 2018 planning report recommendations, which were distributed to the PAC members at the meeting. The project proposes to address the poor pavement condition, remove the existing concrete slab, upgrade the existing drainage system for pedestrian, wait, for stormwater and provide stormwater treatment, provide safer accommodations for pedestrians and bicycles, improve safety at intersections within the project limits, maintain the historic character at the town of Wolfboro. That was the state's recommendations. They also said, "The report will include two-lane roadway with sidewalks from Pickering Corner to Pleasant Valley Road, unsignaled intersections at Pickering Corner, New Hampshire 28 southbound left turn onto McManus Road, safety and lighting improvements to uncontrolled pedestrian crosswalks, and safety improvements at golf course and speed reduction." The funny thing is, is that the state, and I want people to understand this, is not pushing roadways. It was not the state's idea to have roadways. It was the PAC, the Second Committee studying this roadway, who determined or asked for the state to look at roundabouts. Now, we go on and we go to number 4B, C, number 4C of that same minutes, and it says, "Pickering Corner intersection. It was asked what a roundabout might cost in comparison to an unsignaled intersection. The DOT did not estimate the roundabout for initial scoping." That shows again that they were not the ones pushing for roundabouts. And I want the public to know that, because I've had many people say to me, "The state's forcing roundabouts on us." However, the New Hampshire DOT would complete estimates if any new proposals during the alternative analysis phase." So that needs to be understood. I've also watched all the videos, and I want to make clear, because there was a lot of misinformation at the last meeting, there are no slip lanes on these roundabouts.
And I will say, I made that statement, and that is correct. I misspoke at that time.
Okay, thank you. And at timestamp 2 hours and 6 minutes of the June 5, 2024 meeting, Jason Ayotte from the New Hampshire DOT stated, "No matter what option we choose during peak traffic times, traffic will still exist." He reiterated that again in his email back to us that he sent to us today. Third, at timestamp 2 hours and 12 minutes of that June 5, 2024 meeting, Jason Ayotte from NHDOT stated, "Buses and logging trucks will have to go through the center of the roundabout." This is much different than the statement made at the December 30, 2024 meeting. He stated that trucks will be able to transverse the center, and he told me that that was not a correct statement. In my discussion with DOT, I asked about the truck size and the ability to negotiate the roundabout. A potato truck, and I ended up finding out the state calls them chip trucks, he said, "is questionable right now." He still hasn't gotten an answer from that. A large pickup truck will make it. Our municipal electric truck is a no. Buses are no. Tractor trailers are no. And then I asked him about plowing, and he said that he was going to go to, call the District 3 and ask them about plowing. His answer came back to us that they will have to use two trucks to plow that, any roundabout that's there. One truck will not fit around it. They will go through and do a good job best they can. Then they will have to clean it up with a smaller truck later on during a storm time. So these are all things that I want people to understand, that there is, if you need good information, go to the state website. Jason Ayotte has his number there. Call him, he'll answer and talk to any citizen and any person, and he'll give you the information. He also says that they follow NEPA standards. And the NEPA standards say that they will work with the public on policy for environmental and other initiatives when they build out a roadway to this effect. They are working with us, with the citizens. They are not forcing the citizens to do something in any one way. So if anybody wants to, they can look up NEPA.gov, and they can find information about that. And then I was wondering, Linda, where did these ones come from that I got today?
Those that you got today?
Yeah.
Those that came out on Monday. Those were ones that you, it said, I did another option before I found this, because I thought we had asked multiple questions. Your email said we couldn't put, we couldn't use the format we have. Today, I found this. Those were ones where another option, if the board so chose to do it. Just like you sent out, I got two different ones from you.
So are we...
But until I found this and asked Pat, I realized what the board voted on on December 30, we could do, and with that, there was no reason...
Are we going to have two or one?
Brian, wait a second. You need to slow down and calm down. If this is the case, the vote that we took on December 30 is valid and is what we're going to go forward with unless somebody, two people who voted in favor decide to reopen it. That's the way we have done all our votes. And I asked whether anybody wanted to make a motion to open it, and the answer is no. I will read, I said, from the letter, it says, "Also, New Hampshire DOT design team conceptualized the compact roundabout with the focus to ensure access to the fuel station convenience stores not impact the Richards House, which required us to modify our typical roundabout design for state routes. The compact was smaller than the mini roundabout presented in 2010 through 2017 corridor study. At the PAC, the Richardson driveway relocation was identified with the help of Brewster, which made it optimal for all the alternatives, as well as reevaluate the signal option. However, I do not recall the entire PAC being biased for a roundabout, but there was enough interest that kept us pursuing the advantages we saw from engineering perspective. It also gave us a distinct alternative to compare against, which is also usually an advantage in determining the preferred alternative heading into a public hearing." So he said that there was not bias. So. All righty, takes care of that. We can move on. All right, we're on to the bid. Oh, the bid for the printing of the annual report. And we got a letter on it, and Amy is recommending Country Press.
Yeah, and this is the same firm that we've been using the past couple of years since we've transitioned to the larger books. Be 720 copies. There'll be 20 spiral bounds. Planning approximately 200 pages within the report. Department heads have been instructed to begin their reports. It also allows for an electronic copy to be placed on the webpage at an expense of $3,250.
Okay, and we need a motion to approve that?
Yep.
Does anybody want to make that motion?
So moved.
Okay, I've got a motion by Brian, I mean Brad. I'll second it. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
We have to decide who we want to dedicate the annual report to. I would like to suggest that the main person be Sarah Silk. I have, and I'm passing around to you, there are three different pictures of her. One where she's doing a quilt, and she gave quilts to many people after they had to deal with a difficult life circumstance. There's a picture of her being sworn into office by Pat Waterman. She was on the ZVA. She was a past selectman. She's on the Agricultural Commission. She's been on the Conservation Commission for years, so I thought that was appropriate. And the last one is a group picture in front of the hazardous waste site. Sarah was instrumental in getting the funds and putting together and having that facility built in town and is working to have an inter-municipal agreement. It started out first with Maltonboro, Tuftonboro, Alton, and Wolfboro. Now it's just Alton and Wolfboro. So that's why I think that she should be the main, and maybe in memorial and dedicated to. I went over the list of the people who had died. James Dearborn Senior was a police, I mean a fire person. How high did he get? Do you know, Jim?
I don't. It was well before my time.
And I went through, and the other person I know who was on a town committee and instrumental was Candace Thayer, was on the library trustees, was very active, and also in helping design and work on the renovations to the library, and finally went over to the Wolfboro Library Foundation and helped raise the money to help support that. Those are the two that I saw, and we usually like to put in the book also some little write-up of the people who had served. Did anybody see anybody else? Brad?
I see, you know, we had Herb Vinicom's name in here. Was he on any, I mean, he had a lot to do in the town. Was he on any committees?
I don't know, I would like to check that. He did Hearthstone Homes, and we could do it just for that significant part of Herb. And I, he was another one, but I couldn't think of whether he had.
Yeah, I couldn't either.
So I'd be willing to put him in. I think he did, played a major role in Iron Hill. Anybody else see, anything else? Are we comfortable with, that gives us one, two, three smaller notes, and then the dedication to Sarah in memorial? Is that okay with everybody?
I'm fine with it.
Sounds good.
And take a look at those pictures. And then the other thing was in this packet, which we need to all work together, is our annual report, and that we have to get going. I usually go through the agendas and try to look at the topics, but it would be helpful if some of you helped with that.
Pitch in.
Good, that would be great.
So you're looking for some kind of a signal on the photographs, on the images?
Yeah, just, you know, and I was thinking if you could put one on the front cover, one on the back cover, and one on the inside cover. It would cover the three things that Sarah was very instrumental in.
I think the, well, I'll send it over to you, I think. She was instrumental in a whole bunch of things, but there's one signature thing that I think she was really proud of, and that was the hazardous facility. Proud of the work, proud of the pulling people together.
Yeah.
There's an image here that I think kind of says it all.
Yeah, I thought that was good. The other part of her was to understand what it meant to get something like a comfort quilt when you've just gone through something really hard. And there are many, many people in this town who, after something difficult life circumstances happened, that she would show up with a quilt.
Yeah.
So that was the quilt, and so, take a look at it, and we can decide for sure on the pictures, but I would like to move that forward. Is there anything else we need, Jim?
No.
Okay. All righty, next item on the agenda is other business.
I have one item.
Okay.
In front of you, I handed out this evening, and I sent it to you electronically, the word version of the warrant articles. On that word version, by the title of the warrant article, is the assigned Board of Selectment member who will be speaking to the article. Just want to bring to your attention the last page. Brian had asked that we have this reviewed by legal. It was reviewed by Nathan. He reviewed the memo that came forward from Granite Hill. He reviewed the warrant article. He feels it's contemporary with what we should be doing relative to the elderly tax exemption. Therefore, we still need to vote to recommend and move this particular article to the warrant.
Okay, so this is the increase in income limits of elderly tax exemption. Do I have a motion from somebody to recommend?
So moved.
I got a, Paul recommended a second by Brian. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye. Move to the warrant. Did I hear you, Brian?
Yes.
Second.
And I hear Paul as a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye. Take care of everything, Jim?
That's it. The only thing we have left to vote on now is the collective bargaining agreements and the bond hearings.
Just one quick one, and is on the Mill Street Pump. The Article 17 is 2023.
Okay, thank you.
Okay? Just that one. All right, I have two other business. I am going to read my comments so I can email it to Brenda Girret, the Select Board Secretary, to make her job easier. "Over the holiday, I had the opportunity to mingle with large groups of Wolfboro citizens as they used the town facilities, and I have some thoughts about what I experienced." First, I'll do Last Night Wolfboro. Last Night Wolfboro is an Economic Development Committee event. Last Night Wolfboro Committee is a subcommittee of the EDC. I want to thank the Steering Committee members, Brenda Girret, who does an outstanding job with our public relations, Kate Turner, Libby Peard, who did fundraising and the scavenger hunt, Alexis Austin from Park and Rec, who helped plan and staff events, and I was the chair. Last Night Wolfboro 2024 had a record turnout of over 2,000 attending the events, with another 2,000 or more who viewed the fireworks. The events were for all ages, and many generation families attended. The scavenger hunt returned this year. The week-long scavenger hunt brought citizens back into the local stores after Christmas. One participant... One participant said, "I love that we went into places we hadn't been before." Another one said, "The hotel lobby was absolutely not what we expected it would look like from the outside." And another one said, "We really enjoyed it. Took the kids away from their electronics for a good four hours or so, and that's always a plus." I want to thank the day of the event volunteers who made this event possible. Cindy Fornier, Jen Morgan, Andrea Cooper, Aidan Harrington, Sheila Chisholm, Ann Blodgett, Roger Murray, Doug Braskin, Kathy Dragonfly, John Brooks, Jessica Robachow, Amy Muccio, Franciscan Muccio, members of the Lions Club who ran Bingo, the dinner workers at the First Congregational Church, the youth center members who did face painting, the fire department for attending and bringing hats, the Boy Scouts for staffing cornhole and other games, and the Park and Rec staff for helping staff plan and runs events. A special thanks to the sponsors who provided the funds to pay for the fireworks and all the entertainment and venues. Squadoe Landscaping, Black's Paper Store, Taylor Community, Wind Drifter Resort, Lake Winnie Team, Hunter Shop and Save, Wolfboro Dock Company, Leonu McDonald and Roberts, Paul Zimmerman, Dorian Insurance, Brewster, Beyond the Box, Edward Jones, Kevin Lawler, Back Bay Clothing, WCYC Marine Services, Wolfboro Car Wash, Camp Patrol, Dive Winnipesaukee, Wolfboro Casuals, Wolfboro Community Food Co-op, Harmony Coffee House, Black Brookside Plumbing and Heating, Water Ed Salon, Marcy's Porch and Pub, Yankee Peddler Realtors, Winnipesaukee Stations, Bradley's Hardware, Martha Trepanier, Nancy Hirschberg, Avery Insurance, Maxfield Real Estate, Jeff McGinnis, Raymond James, Top of the Hill Farm, Wentworth Inn, and KW The Children's Center for sponsoring wildlife encounters, J.C.'s Signs, who gave us a discount on a new banner, the First Congregational Church for letting us use their building and charging no fee, the Lions Club for running the Bingo, the Yum Yum Shop for donating cookies, Community TV for interviews, and they taped some of the events. Some companies gave us door prizes and tickets, the Wolfboro Trolley Company, the Wright Museum, the Boat Museum, the Mount Washington Cruise, and Winnie Paws Stations. And I want to thank all those people. It was a great success. So over the holidays, I had a opportunity to visit several of the town's recreational facilities. It was refreshing to spend time with Wolfboro citizens who were enjoying and appreciating the town facilities. I went to the Abenaki Ski Area to watch my grandkids ski one night. In the lodge, I saw families renting skis, eating, and then leaving the lodge to enjoy skiing with our snow guns blasting. I thought about how lucky Wolfboro was that there were citizens committed to keeping Abenaki Ski Area alive, and that the Friends of Abenaki raised funds to add snowmaking along with funds for the new lodge. I attended the Bruins Alumni Game against local hockey players put on by the Friends of Kingswood Hockey. The arena was full of kids, parents, grandparents, and citizens. I had several conversations with citizens who were impressed with the renovations to the arena. The event brought in citizens who wanted something to do and were pleased to be able to come see the Bruin alumni play. I again thought about how lucky Wolfboro is to have the Friends of Pop Whalen, who donated funds to assist in the renovating the Pop Whalen Ice Arena and Art Center. While the Select Board wrestles with making this enterprise fund break even, the citizens using the facilities and those who donated money know how important this asset is to the community and feel good about what the town has accomplished. It was nice to be in a positive atmosphere where citizens were enjoying town assets. Last Night Wolfboro used town facilities, the Great Hall Town Hall that the Friends of the Wolfboro Town Hall raised funds to make happen, the libraries Wolfboro Foundation that raised funds to make the renovations a reality, and the Friends of Pop Whalen who raised funds to renovate the facility. It is important that the Select Board keep in mind that the citizens of Wolfboro voted for these capital projects, and the citizens using these facilities are enjoying them. I am always amazed by the generosity of Wolfboro citizens who donate to nonprofit groups that raise funds for the town facility projects, which lessens the tax burden on every taxpayer along with supporting all the nonprofit organizations that lets our community take care of each other. Next thing on the agenda is the Town Manager's Report.
Yeah, a couple of items. First of all, as I think you're aware, we had an issue with the compressor at the Pop Whalen Arena. We are able to get that system rebuilt for approximately $10,000. I authorized that to go forward to get that large compressor repaired.
Jim, is that the one we had rebuilt a while ago?
It is.
It is, okay.
There is no warranty on the rebuild. Also, today, I believe, the Board of Selectmen received in their email a letter from New Hampshire DRA reminding us that we have to do our revaluation this year. So we need to continue to push that as a priority as we move into 2025. Currently working on getting the budget buttoned up for budget hearing. We have a budget meeting tomorrow night. Hopefully that will finalize that, and union negotiations, we're close to buttoning those up as well. That's all I have.
Okay, committee report. Brad?
Yeah, fairly easy one this past week or so. All I had was a planning board meeting last night. A little interesting, one of the projects it was in was Hancock Lumber. They're doing some improvements down back where all the open lumber's been sitting on the ground, and they're doing some drainage improvements there, and the stormwater management. And one of the things they're installing there, I'll talk about it when we get to our Wolfboro Waters meeting too, would be the jellyfish filter they're putting in into the system there too. So I see some of these private companies and projects caring and then putting the effort into improving the water quality.
Okay, Paul?
Okay, been working with Jim and Mr. Senical on both the AFSMI as well as the Wolfboro PD negotiations. As Jim said, they're moving along. Police Commission meeting, I have another one again tomorrow night. I'll be visiting with the Friends of Libby tomorrow night. I participated yesterday in an ambulance conversation. I think Brian knew a remote from that. And the strategy behind that meeting really was to appropriately start the communication and clarity campaign with the general public as to what's afoot here for this ambulance initiative that we're about to undertake if we get approval to do so. That's it.
Brian?
I had a Heritage Committee meeting today, discussion about the Libby Museum, and they're looking at other ways to move the artifacts. They have a copy of the same inventory that you have, but they told me on the inventory it is listed which artifacts are at Dr. Libby's.
Yeah, they are. Yeah, they just got to sort by that. Way to do it, sort.
And they, but they wish there was pictures and dimensions, because it would make packing a lot easier. Linda and I worked on the warrant articles, and we had the ad hoc ambulance meeting, and I'll be working with Tom Zotti and Ray, Ray Skolarsky, the chair, for my messaging for the taping for those two warrant articles.
Two Budget Committee. We've had two Budget Committees since the last time we met.
Oh, yeah, and two Budget Committee meetings.
Yeah. I've had the two Budget Committee meetings, two Last Night Wolfboro meetings, and one Friends of Pop Whalen. But also on December 20th, as Chair of the Wolfboro Waters Committee, I met with the Rust Pond Association, the Lake Winnipesaukee Alliance, Steve Randall, and New Hampshire DOT Highways Maintenance District Engineer Nancy Spalding to discuss about the drainage issues on Route 28 from Pleasant Valley Road down to Abenaki Estates. This was a section removed from the Route 28 project due to funding. This area was spotted, was cited in the Wolfboro Bay Watershed Management Plan as an area that needed some best management practices for the drainage system. So this group started the conversation with the New Hampshire DOT District III in hopes that they can find some funds and help us deal with some of the water after the project on Route 28. And there were some suggestions. So it was a good meeting, and it shows that we just keep on talking about and trying to get
Knock them down.
Our water quality under control.
Keep knocking them down.
Yep. Okay, do we have anybody here from the press?
Linda, one thing I need to add.
Yes, sir.
Two things, actually. First, we're shooting for February 5th for the water insurer rates.
Oh, good.
We are in receipt of the draft report. Steve and Casey are reviewing it, and as soon as that they can get here is the 5th. The other item is, I'm in receipt of the draft, or the final report from the Libby. I'm going to review that tomorrow, and I'll get it out to the Board tomorrow afternoon.
Okay. All right, press?
Yes, I just want to clarify, there was quite a bit of discussion about the articles about the intersections of Route 28 and Pickering Corner and McManus and Ken Apache Roads. Am I correct that you ended up leaving them as you have printed them, as you passed out? I have a paper on that. You didn't make any changes on those? Did you modify those?
I don't know what copy you have, so it's hard. I will send you over.
I think the best thing is to send.
I will send you, I will send you a copy of the ones that we approved on December 30th.
I think that's what I have. I think that's what I have.
In the packet, it was not in this packet. So if you have the ones from this packet, they're not correct.
Oh, okay. Yes, please send me the correct ones.
Okay.
And when we have the deliberative session, can people amend these articles as well as the others?
Sure.
Can any article can be amended?
You can change any wording in any article. What you cannot do is change the intent of the article.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Should be interesting, the deliberative session.
Yes. Okay. Any input from the public?
Come on up.
You got to say it so the people at home who might not know you, Scott.
Scott Duchamp from Wolfboro. I'm just really concerned about this whole roundabout situation. I think it's a really bad thing for the town. I think it's going to cause traffic mayhem. I've been driving truck for a long time, thanks to Brad and his family. Got my license here in this building, like 1981 commercial driver's license, and I just, I just see all the things that can go wrong. I'm, you know, I'm like two or three steps in my mind what's going to happen here. Just the circle over in Ospey, which is a fairly good-sized circle, when I go through there with my truck, and I don't have a tractor, I have, I do have a triaxle with a pretty good-sized trailer behind a lot of time, but when you go through there, a lot of times there might be a lot of other cars coming through, and it's like a train. And you have to stop, and once they start coming through and they're all close together, which most of the time they're, you know, from here to you guys, you know, because they're only going 20 miles an hour, so they're pretty close together, the cars just come into the circle, and you have to, they just keep coming. If there's, if there's 30 or 40 cars, you just, they all just come through, everybody's just, even though, nobody can just get in. So what's going to happen up here is, on a weekend or whatever, when the traffic's coming into town, what I can see, foresee happening is that the traffic coming from the south, coming into town, is just going to just keep flowing, and nobody's going to have a chance to get up the hill. And, and the other thing about it too is that the, once, once you, people get going around there, you just, like I said, nobody's, this is going to be, it's going to be a mess. But anyway, the other thing I was thinking too the other day was, the way it is now, if you're coming into town and it gets plugged up down through here, whether it's Cop and the school or whatever, downtown's busy, at least the way it is now, most people that know how to, you know, most people know how to drive, once, they don't block the intersection. So the people coming, so people stop, and they'll let the people go up the hill and go towards south Wolfboro or whatever, and they don't block the intersection. What I can see happening in that circle is just, the circle just getting all jammed up, and nobody's going anywhere. I just think it's a bad idea, and the big trucks coming up the hills, they're going to have trouble. It's, you know, the trucks hit curbs all the time. That curbing down over in Ospey is always got rubber marks on it, and people bending their rims, and that's fairly easy to get around, but this is going to be a mess. And, well, let's see if I can, you know, and then just like, just coming into town, I just think that if nobody's ever been here, and their first time coming into town, they're not going to see all those maple trees, they're not going to see the, they're not going to see the Civil War monument, they're not going to see just the town, Brewster and, you know, they're just going to, you know, I think they're just going to be saying, how the heck am I going to get through this mess? And I just, I just think it's a really bad idea, and, and I think it's just going to cause, like, just trying to build this thing is just going to cause even more traffic mayhem. I just personally think that we should just, I just hope that we just don't do it, and just fix the road, get the concrete out of the road, and just make the road a little wider, and the sidewalks better, and that, and I think we, I think we just have to deal with, with the traffic and the way it, because there's no getting around it, the town town gets plugged up, and there's not much you can do about it, but at least the way it is now, people won't block the intersection and they can get around. I think that traffic circle is just going to make things way worse. And, you know, so, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in and telling us that.
Okay. Well, thank you, and Happy New Year.
I need a motion to go into non-public session.
Moved.
Paul moved. Do I have a second? Brad seconded. Brad?
Yes.
Linda's yes. Paul's yes. Brian, yes? Okay. Moving. Moving.